Good evening. I call to order the City of Gerald's special call of city council meeting and workshop Wednesday, November 19th at 7:00 P. M. First thing on the agenda in the roll call, we have two members absent. Now invocation of pleasure allegiance led by Councilman Lenny Fawcett.
Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the gift of another day. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve and humbly ask that you continue to grant us with your wisdom in our service. Please continue to guide and watch over our staff, our boards, police department, citizens, city council, emergency services, and our school districts. Or may your wisdom and knowledge be reflected in our applications of policies and laws, and may our decisions bring honor and glory back to you. For those that are here today, we ask that you continue to protect them in their travels. In your precious name we pray. End.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. We do have one. Rusty Bryson, would you like to speak now or?
I'm at five points three, please.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, we are going to canvass the November 4th, 2025 election results, agenda item 3.1. Consideration of possible action regarding resolution number 2025-1119-01, resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the City of Gerald, November 4th, 2025 general election. Uh, just, uh.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution number.
I make motion to approve resolution 2025-1119-01.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Okay, we will now have a swearing in ceremony and a certification of certificates of election for the elected officials. Those three were older woman place three, Tanya Fawcett, older man place four, Drew Sumner, and older woman place five, Kami Thissner. If you'd like to come up. I will present you all your certificates of election. Would you like to get a picture or anything?
Got it. I'll take that. Got it.
All right, basically he'll send it to you. Our judge will swear you all in.
So let's do it since it's your first time, let's do you.
This is my first time.
You and I will do this.
Yeah.
And you guys can decide whether you want to do them independently or it just takes some minutes, so. All right, so. This is an oath of office in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas. Please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kami Thissner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of older woman place. Of older woman place.
Of the office of older woman place five.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh.
Okay.
You can do it again. They'll come with me, I do. Next one.
They will have to be to serve. It takes time away from them.
Absolutely. This should be recognized for sure. Okay. You're gonna have your, raise your right hand, let him know if you're ready for the pocket. There we go. Aye, Tanya Fawcett.
Aye, Tanya Fawcett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of older woman place three.
Of the office of older woman place three.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach, you have anybody on your side?
Oh, Jill doesn't like to come up.
All right. Aye, state your name.
Yes, yes. All right.
Aye, Drew Sumner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of older woman place.
Uh, of the office of older woman place four.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the city of Gerald.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Go have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are going to adjourn for a shorter session. People can meet the newly elected council members. But we are adjourned at 7:09 P. M. Our city council is now back in session at 7:26 P. M. Okay, moving on to regular agenda items. Agenda item 5.1, consideration of possible action regarding the appointment of mayor pro temp. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous? Okay, agenda item 5.2, consideration of possible action with respect to a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of Gerald combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 2026, and other matters related thereto. Hi.
We need Mayor, council, staff, Paul Jason, specialized public finance, who serves as a financial advisor, to the city, and our colleague, Will Smith, here as well. We're here to give you information related to the resolution we are going to consider tonight. This is related to a certificate of obligation. This is the city's seventh CEO issued since 2006, and just about all those CEOs refer water sewer type projects and critical infrastructure. This is just another issuance. It's part of your CIP. We're there. If there's any specific questions about the projects, who knows the answer to those. We're looking at funding roughly 12 million projects on page one of this presentation here. The majority of it is for the elevated storage tank, and then there's wastewater treatment plant designed for the Dynamo Wastewater Plant, and then there's the water line extension for Kendra 305. So that totals 12 million. The resolution tonight is for 13 million because by the time you provide the notice and we actually price the transaction, it's roughly about 60 days. So between now and then, that's just cushion in the event that you get an outbid price or something at first. Hopefully that amount will be 12 million plus just the cost of issuance. Though we've got some information in future slides. We're looking at a 30-year structure, rated at 4.84 percent. That's a fixed rate. It's callable in roughly nine to 10 years. That means you can refund or repay it. This has roughly a quarter percent cushion in that rate, so if you're bidding out today, you'd probably be closer to 4.5, 4.6 percent. Their certificates will be sold on February 5th, so we'll come back to this council February 5th with the final bid results from the bidding process, and then we'll close roughly one month later. So when you close, all the proceeds will be delivered to the city's depositary account. So it's a financial close and not an in-person close, but all the proceeds will be delivered at closing. Page three is the structure of the transaction. We took into account all the water sewer that's supported by rates of the utilities. And this also includes the debt issued in 2015 through Lone Star Regional Water Authority, the contract, contract revenue bonds. You can see this debt issue is structured for level debt, for the life of the transaction, and it's further level around 3.3 million. It goes up a little bit to around 3.5. And then it pays off in roughly 2056, but your debt sort of starts dropping pretty significantly in 2044. So I can mention, we're looking at an issue around 12.145 million. That's the 12 million we discussed on previous slides, plus the cost of issuance. And that's the fee for all the parties involved in your financing team. Our fee, you want to go through a rating process again, your law attorney, opinion agent, the attorney general. So that's all the fees for the transaction. And then the bottom line is on page three. We're here tonight just to kick off this process, to have council consider the resolution, authorizing the publication in the paper. Diane has been through this a number of times. It's got to go in the paper two consecutive weeks, and then we cannot come back to this council to approve the ordinance until 45 days has left. And so that's why we'll kick it off tonight, and then we'll come back to this council February 5th for the final bids and approval of the ordinance issued by the CEOs. And then we'll close March 5th. So appreciate the opportunity to give you the update. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So I can confirm that those are going to be coming at a fixed rate?
Yes, it's going to be a fixed rate for 30 years. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a resolution number in this or just a general resolution? How does that work?
Is it pretty much updating the staff to publish, make the publication?
Resolution number is 2025-line 119-03.
Maybe the main question, just we'll be able to pay that back. Okay. I'll accept the motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve resolution 2025-1119-03. Did I even put it in order?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other motion on the floor? No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 5.3. We're going to discuss and take lots of action regarding to a change in zoning designation from single-family suburban SF2 to general commercial C2 on property described as Rowing Hill Meadow Blockade Lot 27, acres point five zero, generally located at 372 Meadow Valley Loop, General Texas.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, you have seen this request before. It already did go in for infancy as well. This is a request to change something from SF2 to C2 on property generally located at 372 Meadow Valley Loop. The property location is on the map before you. It's a small blue lot that the arrow is pointing to. So just, just this small blue lot right here, not all of the pink that is located up against the 35, it's just a small blue lot.
I couldn't, there's no relation, the, what you have highlighted in pink and blue, there, there's no relation to that being in becoming just one track? Or is it going to be an independent?
This is an independent, it's a property as was.
What I thought. Thank you.
And we do have a public comment, so. Mr. Bryson, would you like to come and speak?
I would. I'm pretty sure you know my stance on this. But I do want to let you know John Brannigan approved all of the guidelines that we asked for when we approved it. I haven't emailed from him. But I also know that the property sold shortly thereafter. But I also have a copy of the ordinance. And I'm not going to read you the whole ordinance, okay? But ordinance number 2021-1207-06. Whereas the city council finds that all notice requirements have been met, now therefore be it ordained by the city council in the city of Gerald, Texas. The city council hereby allows the rezoning of a lot described above, which is the same lot y'all are talking about. I can give you a copy. And conflicted in Exhibit A from SF2, excuse me, to C2 with the following exceptions. No hotel, no school. Lighter use such as tutoring facilities, et cetera, are allowed. No gas station, no hospital. Lighter use such as a clinic or dentist offices allowed, which Brannigan elaborated. That's what he wanted. No bars or taverns. Restaurants with less than 50% alcohol sales. A drive-in and out-of-retail uses would be installed so as not to impact on the subdivision. I have not found where this ordinance has been replaced. I know that the property was changed back to residential. I understand that. But if you're going back to C2, this ordinance is still in place. Because I could not find an ordinance that repealed this. And as you know, our ordinances stay in place until you repeal them, until you replace them. This one has not been replaced. Correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, but it has not been replaced. So what I'm asking for you to do is, of course, we would love for it to remain residential. But if you can't, please go back and look at this ordinance. This ordinance and the uses were done by the neighborhood and Mr. Brannigan, who owned the property at that time. So I ask that you please do your due diligence. Take care of your residence. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And so history, we've discussed before. The property was supposed to be rezoned from C3 to, from SF2 to C3 back in 2021. As was previously stated by Ms. Bryson, the council, the Kansas City council did approve a C2 with the conditions as stated before you on the screen. The property owner, current property owner is here. Jake, do you have anything to say or do you agree with? Okay. So he and I did speak on the phone. He is in agreement with these conditions with the exception, and this is coming from city staff as well, with the exception of the speed bumps. That is not something that we recommend for approval due to the possible danger. Somebody does go over those too quickly, the potential property damage, like say heat. And then that would also have to be approved by an armed fire marshal. And I'm fairly certain that that would probably go against fire code. So with the exception of that one, he is in agreeance to all of those conditions. Can you put that back on the property with a C2 zoning?
So what exactly are we needing to do here tonight? Just approve the rezoning? Does that give rid of the ordinance that we have? Like she said, do we need to actually repeal that ordinance or?
No, I don't repeal that ordinance because that would repeal all of the zoning on the remainder. So this ordinance would, this ordinance would hopefully will change the zoning on that one particular lot that had been brought from SF2 back to C2 with the conditions as stated.
With the exception of?
With the exception of speed bumps.
With the exception of speed bumps, yes.
We understood that. That's why I didn't even mention that.
I had one general question. In the last council meeting regarding this, we were told that staff couldn't find where property owners were notified and all that. You've got stuff in place now where we don't have this problem, right? Going forward on anything we're doing, property, we have records to share.
Everything that I do is shared into a network folder that pretty much every follow-up staff has, runs us to, and myself.
So it can be accessed five years down the road, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's the question.
Unless something catastrophic happens, I can't, you know, can't predict the future, but yes.
Yeah, we have individual files to share, a share folder. So everything that I do stays with the city, even if I leave the city.
Perhaps we should also look at, you know, backup system, you know, offsite or something.
We already have those in place.
Okay.
And so if you're going to make a motion on the ordinance, then I would just ask that it include, the statement include with the conditions as presented with the removal of the speed bumps.
Yes, it is.
Discussing, taking action.
Mayor Proton, I'll make motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2025-1119-04 as written and captured by the mayor based on staff's recommendation for findings with the conditions as presented and removal of the speed rule.
Councilman, it's not to recommend approval, it's a motion to approve, right?
Motion to, but it's written here.
My apologies. That, it should be to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Please for checking out there. Motion to approve ordinance 2025-1119-04 as written and captured by the mayor based on staff's recommendation for findings with conditions as presented and removal of the speed rule.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. No further discussions. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous? All right, moving on to agenda item 5.4. Discussing, considering action on an ordinance to establish rules for public comments at city council meetings, planning, and zoning meetings, and any applicable board meetings or commission meetings.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to point, I could view a new court letter. There's a mistake on the one in the packet. And in that court letter, I also have the, how the motion should be addressed in the second page. The purpose of the resolution is to ensure the City of Gerald is compliant with the Texas Civil Code 551.007, which governs the public right to speak in governmental meetings. The resolution formalized and clarified the city procedures and public comments during city council meeting and replaced previous public comment policies. Key elements on this resolution. If those reaffirm the statutory requirement to allow members of the public to speak on any posted agenda items to maintain legal compliance and ensure focused business efficient meetings, the resolution remove the prior allowance for non-agenda public items. Only related to items formally posted on the agenda will be permitted moving forward. Every speaker must completely speak before, complete a speaker's form before the meeting, which will be designed with the yellow cards. And when they present before the podium, it must state their name and address. Public comments must be related to the agenda item being addressed to ensure compliance with the open meeting act. And the presiding officer may stop comments that deviate from or are not relevant to the posted agenda. Speakers must maintain civility and avoid disrupting the meeting. The presiding officer has authority to determine when the courtroom has been disturbed. Individuals who fail to comply may forfeit the speaking opportunity and disruptive individuals may be removed from the meeting. The staff recommends approval of the ordinance as read.
Clarification on the topic of creation, the resolution number not matching all of the.
Yes, that's, that's one I skipped.
The one in the name when you gave it.
Yeah, the resolution number should be 2025-1119-02.
Thank you.
I guess I have a quick question for our attorney. It's okay to wipe out that general open where people can come up and speak to us about anything?
No, that was never a requirement. I'm the only one named that. That's always something that was a courtesy for the council to do. However, there was a change two or three sessions ago that added a public testimony provision that allowed the public to speak on agendaized items. So it's still up to the council as to whether they want to allow comments on any topic or just to limit it as this one does to agenda items. So it's still up to the council as to whether they want to allow comments on any topic or just to limit it as this one does to agenda items.
I'll motion to approve resolution 2025-1119-02 as presented.
Second.
All right, we're in motion on the floor in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Anyamis? Okay, at this time, we are actually going to move agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 to after executive session. Move on to adjourning into executive session. We're adjourning to executive session, promoting the Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of the attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or on a settlement offer. Or on a matter of which duty of the attorney to the governmental body of the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas. The only reflection of Texas Government Code Chapter 551 to wit. A, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as the TOM tract. B, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as the Azonis tract. And C, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as cornhill business park phase three. City council is now adjourned at 7:48 PM. Gerald, city council is now back in session at 9:03 PM. All right, we're going to open a session to consider, discuss, deliberate, take action on any items discussed in the executive session. A, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as the TOM, TOM tract. We have no action. B, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as the Azonis tract. We have no action. And C, to discuss the proposed terms of the development agreement on property, commonly referred to as cornhill business park phase three. We have no action. All right, so at this time, we are adjourned into a workshop. City council is adjourned at 9:04 PM. All right, 6.1, receiving a presentation of proposed updates to water, wastewater utility rates. How you doing?
Good, at the Florida, this mayor council, thank you very much, this looks familiar. What we're going to do tonight is actually catch up with what we've done, cover what we did a little bit in the past, not want to dwell on it, but then walk into where we are now. We've had a lot of things changed since last time we were up here doing this. And we'll do what we did before too, we'll throw the model up for those who were here, if you remember, we kind of played with the model, looked at it, did some scenarios, just to give you an idea of what the drivers are, which options are, and what we can look at. So, beginning here, just kind of set in place for where we are, right now, same thing as before, without any increases, stay more at current rates. We don't have enough funds to get us through for now, 26 through 2030, any of those years really, to cover everything that we're doing. Key drivers, big driver, if you remember, currently we do not cover our existing debt due to the water, more wastewater, so everything is covered through the property tax general fund. Probably the main driver, we'll look at that and see what we're talking about and the impact that has in just a minute. And then we've got capital funding, things that we've been talking about, some projects that we've been talking about, some that we haven't hit yet and be changing. But again, funding the capital program, so right now, same numbers we have before, in existing debt service for the next five years, about sixteen and a half million dollars that we're looking at. That is currently not funded through the utility system. Capital improvement wise, for the next five years, we're looking at about 136 million dollars that we need to fund on projects. So, and those things aside, we also have things like debt service coverage that we have to meet, we don't have a choice, we have to hit debt service coverages every year. And then we also want to look at O and M reserves, what are we talking about on funding that, what do we want to fund that with? One thing that we've done different, we had them in place before, a lot has happened since last time and now, so impact fees. So, they were much lower last time, we're still at 60%, you are aware of what the maximum allowable number is. But when we did the evaluation, then now we're at 60% of that maximum level for 26 and 27, is how we did the analysis there. One thing currently, on wastewater, if you remember, we flat charge your wastewater customers. So regardless of what size house they have, facility they have, they're charged, every customer is charged the same amount. So what we did do in this analysis, just like we had talked about before, we removed that and we put a volumetric rate in there for them, roughly 75% of what their water usage is. Which comes out to be right at your quarter, your winter quarter averaging. So, there's some different ways to do that, probably the main way to do that is a winter quarter averaging, which just says, okay, during the winter period, say December, January, February, what is our water usage there? In theory, we don't have any irrigation, we don't have any outside water that we're doing, so that really should be domestic use, everything that's happening in the house. So then we're safe, so we carry that same average over through the rest of the year. Well, that does equate to about 75% of what your water usage is. So we're using your water bills, taking those 75%, that's the amount we're using for sewer usage, to explode. Also, currently on the water side, you don't charge for the first 2,000 gallons. So you give that for free, we're changing that, we're starting to include the first 2,000 gallons being charged, but we're also charging it at lower than what the actual cost of the water is. So we're still, we're still keeping a rate in there, we're just not giving it away for free in this analysis. We have the debt service coverage ratio we're setting at 1.1. And here, this is just a quick picture, again, of where we were before. So if you'll note, keep in mind now, we're talking about 2026. So what we're doing is trying to get the rates set in place for 2026, the next year's capital program, next year's budget, we've actually rolled through, updated the model. We were at 2025, last time we had this conversation, now we've updated with your approved 2026 budget in the model. If you remember last time for 2026, all the way at the bottom, we were talking about monthly bill. In 2026, increasing your monthly bill by 149 to 85. Water and wastewater combined, about 116 and a half percent. And then in 2028, following that up with an additional 68.7% increase. So that's what we were looking at at last time we were here. It's a little tougher to see, we talked about currently, you do not pay your existing debt service through your water wastewater system. Okay, so that is funded through the city, through your general fund. 2026, we're talking about almost 3.7 million dollars combined. So that's 1.3 million on the water side, 1.4 on the, or 2.3 on the water, 1.4 on the wastewater side. The reason this is important is, as we're looking at this, the goal of our study, one of the goals is to start funding your system with what it actually costs, so the water system and the sewer system are paying for themselves. What that means, part of it, part of the problem that we're looking at, is we have to recover right off the bat, say for 2026, 3.7 million dollars in cash. The flip side, that frees up 3.7 million dollars in cash from the general fund. So, if you're recovering through the water wastewater system, you freed up 3.7 million dollars to use for whatever else you needed for roadways or whatever, wherever it is, but you literally freed up that amount of money for the rest of your system in the general fund. And that carries on every year, because we will switch these dollars to be paid through the utility system. Here, CIP standpoint, we talked about on the bottom, the current CIP, we're now at 136.1 million dollars. Before, when we were talking, we were at about 205 million dollars with the CIP. Two things. Water supply, we're talking about water supply in a big way, last time we were having this conversation. What, a month ago or something, and we know we've taken a different direction, that's accounted for in the CIP, as well as moving some projects around. What, again, as I mentioned, we're really focused on 2026 and we're trying to get the rates in place for January 1, 2026, to move forwards there. This capital program, when we go into 2027, maybe it's close, 28, 29, those are going to change, those are going to move, we know that already. And even more so for y'all, because you're only going to a master plan right now for water and wastewater. So by the time, it's not going to be ready to get this in place for 2026, but shortly after that, you'll have a different master plan, one that more closely mirrors where you're at right now, actually. So, so this will be different, again, that's why the primary focus is 26. We still need to concentrate on the others, because we do want to build up a reserve fund, we have to make debt service covers, and you'll see if that would be an issue when we look at the model. Then the other part of that, I know this gets hard to see, I apologize for that, the key things is let's look at from the top. This is what you saw last time, this is your baseline. That's under current rates, the bottom part is under current rates now with the revised model. So you see at the very bottom of the combined, that change in net assets. For combined system, that's where we were last time, say for 2026, that 2.87 million dollars, that's how much under current rates, under the current situation, we were under recovering. Or projected under recovery by 2.87 million dollars in 2026 for water and wastewater. That's moving the debt service, your existing debt service, not even taking into account your new capital programs that you need to address too. That's your existing debt service, and you remember, that number was 3.7 million dollars. So, you see what the impact is, that is a big driver in what's happening, is you're playing catch up to operating the way that you really should be operating your utility system. Now we go to the bottom, that combined, that bottom box, that over and under recovery, if you look at 2026, that 531,000. So we've gone from 2.87 million dollars under recovering to 531,000. So it's a big swing, big swing, big difference. You see, moving up there, that over/under recovery on the water side in this bottom section, for 26 is that 1.749 million dollars. That's water, so you can see water is under recovering. Wastewater is over recovering at 1.22 million dollars, but it does catch up with us on wastewater. And we do, as we move along, we run into a debt service coverage problem too. So, we do have to make some moves, we do have to start moving forward in that, or we're just going to aggravate the problem further and move out. I believe this is the last slide here. So, what I'd like to do now is actually pull up the model and just show you what it looks like, show you what some things mean, the impacts of that. Are there any questions? I know I ran through it quick, I did it intensely, we covered stuff before, I apologize if I don't give you the opportunity to look at it before, I don't think anybody necessarily wanted to look at it before. But this is a cleaner picture, a much cleaner picture, it's a better picture, more closely resembles what we're needing right now. And again, capital program is going to change in another four months, we'll have something different there, I don't know that it'll be completely different, big difference, I really have no way of knowing on that. Any, any question before we fill the model up? Okay. Here. What's worth even doing, we're missing entry here, and so you're stuck with me. Try to stay in here. This is what you saw just a minute ago, you see at the top on the dashboard. Kind of set up everything so we can run through this now. Make the changes here that we want to adjust, you'll see the impacts. One thing, again, you can see across the top, zero rate increases. On the right-hand side there, that. Here's kind of focus on some sections here. What we have done in 2026, and again, this is just for modeling, as we move out, we can change any of these, we're at 60% on 26, 27. We kept impact fee collections at 60% of maximum allowable, we moved to 128, 29, and 30. Just to give you an idea of what difference that makes. Here, in 26, we're looking at just our total, total expenses, total revenues, the over and under recovery. So we're at 531, here, we're at 495,000 of under recovery. In 27, and just to give you an idea, we moved 27 to 100%. That's going to move us. Now we're over recovering 570,000, probably, probably about plus to 1.1 million dollar swing, by going from 60% to 100%. So that's kind of revenues that we're talking about. 60% we're collecting from growth, from developers, from new growth coming in. The difference, that 1.1 million dollars, those are being, that's being made up by rate fairs. So just to give you an idea of the kind of dollars that we're talking about there. This, this more closely, it was harder to see in the impact fee analysis that we were doing on really what that means from a customer standpoint, but this is what you're talking about customer wise. That shift is moving 1.1 million dollars onto your customers. I'm going to move that back. Where we were at 60 now, just. And now, the first thing we'll do, if you, and this one thing I was talking about, let me show you here. I talked about our debt service covers, it's line 33. So you can see under current rates through 2027, we're at 1.29, 2028, we get 0.82. So 1.1 is our debt service coverage number, so there is a little bit of urgency to make some moves. If you wait till 2027 to do something for 2028, it is going to be very painful to do that. So there is a little bit of urgency in this to address that now for out here. Anything you do now, just snowballs for future years, that just math. So let's, first on the wastewater side. Meter charge, set a volumetric, let's go volumetric, say $4. So we do volumetric rate of $4 per thousand gallons of flow, don't make any other changes on that. Don't make any other changes throughout the test period, say the five years through 2030. You can see on line 21, we are meeting our obligations for wastewater, just by making that change. So I think big difference from $35 a household, $35 a meter, actually, to actually letting customers pay for the impact that they're having on the system. Because that's, that's the difference. Right now, doesn't matter if a house has three bedrooms or three bathrooms or one bathroom. They're obviously making a different impact on your system, but they were paying the same amount of money. So this, this is what that's doing. It's just smart business and it's fair, it's making it more equitable.
What would that do, what would that build look like? It's 35 now.
I do have an answer for that. Here you go, right here. So that would go from 35 to 49.80. That's going to be about a 17.6% increase there. And that's all we, that's all we changed. I say that, that's not all we changed. We also got rid of the 2,000 gallons free on the water side. So we did have a slight change. So we have an impact without doing anything. We have a slight impact on the water side just by starting to charge for the water. But adding that 2,000 gallons of water in there and then that $4 charge. So again, it's what, $14.80? Change on the wastewater side by that $4. And that, that moved, we were at 0.8 on 2028 on line 33. We were at 0.8, something like that. So we moved up to 0.5. So that did help our debt service coverage. And out years, not enough, not enough, obviously. But we're starting to move.
Question. Is the city able to charge different rates for inside-city residents compared to outside, outside the city?
You can, yes, sir. There's, there's, there's nothing stopping you from doing that in, in a natural.
Add some stuff to your presentation to be able to show us. But those numbers look like a bit.
It's, it's in here right now. We, we charge one and a half times. So the differential is, is a 1.5 differential. So we had it included in their analysis, analysis. And we had to set it up where I can change that. Just, it's just one change and it'll flow through. I would not buy it going any higher than that. It, from a cost of service standpoint, we haven't done a cost of service here. Now, cost of service, when we're going through this process, we talked about this maybe before. We can go through it and we'll do, we can do a feasibility study and say, right here, hey, your water system needs to have these increases each year to pay for south, your wastewater, this feasibility study. Cost of service then, another step further, residential customers should be paying this, commercial should be paying this, industrial should be paying this. Another step further, good information. It may or may not have been too much now. We just need to right-size things now, just in general. But, but that is important to know, who's, who's creating what customer classes are creating what cost on your system versus what they're actually paying for that. Where we have to be careful is a lot of times, it's hard to proof out that outside-city customers are actually costing more. You have outside-city infrastructure. Unless you have dedicated outside-city infrastructure, you have lines that just go to this. Most of the time, you have a loop system, so you can stop and you can serve. You have a break, you can serve it from anywhere. So it's tougher to prove that there's a big difference between inside and outside. There is a difference. And just intuitively thinking, having to go outside and further you go outside, you can't say, hey, we're going to go outside way here, there's a cost there where they're either all outside or they're inside. So there is a difference, cost to serve. It's just tougher to prove out just how much it should be. So that's probably why we need to be careful. And the 1.5 is as high as I would recommend being. That, but, good question, I mean, very good question. And it, it's a point of contention right now in the state. So that is getting challenged a lot, as a matter of fact. I wouldn't say here, that we looked at this and where I'm looking at, the goal of this would be, say, on line 15, line 21, and line 27, that over and under recovery. Ideally, we would like everybody to support themselves. Water supports itself, wastewater supports itself. Recognizing that when you do things like issue debt, you issue debt on combined system. Or, or in this case, it's a combined, it's city. But ideally, say you're issuing revenue bonds moving forward because you're securing that debt with the revenue from the utility. So water's securing it with their wastewater. So it's a combined system, you're going to issue combined debt. But you would still ideally, like each system, be able to fund itself. So we'll get there. I already know the end answer on what that would take. Let me show you. We'll just do that. We'll, we'll start from there. By 2030, that is what it takes to get water to be self-sufficient. And doing nothing else with wastewater. The catch is that this is not really what it's going to take. If you look at line 29, that ending fund balance. And one of the things I talked about at the very beginning is we got to figure out what that reserve fund would be, 90 days, 180 days. Whatever the answer is, that is the policy decision. Well, that excess cash, so, so maybe we're talking about three-quarters of a million, a million dollars. With flipside, you need to be careful there. You get one nice line break and you can blow through that reserve fund in a heartbeat. So you, you do need to take that into account. However, that $11.6 million out in 31, that $10.4 million, the $6.5 million is more than you need. Well, what do you do with that? You find capital projects with it. So if we're using some of this money and bleeding it down for capital projects, then it eliminates some of the rate increase. Not, not all of it, not from where you're at, from what you're trying to recover. Not a substantial part of it. Again, your big driver is that starting to pay for your own debt service right now. And that is really a move that you need to make for, just from a city, from a utility standpoint. And it gives you options. It gives the city options, it gives you advantages just in funding other things. So but, that being said, again, ultimately, this is what it takes to get there from a water standpoint and be self-sufficient. Just where we're at now. The biggest part, as I mentioned earlier, is 2026. That's, that's the first move that we need to make. Knowing that capital program is going to change in another four months. And then we'll be doing, we'll do it with updated capital program. We'll have better ideas, we'll have better ideas on growth, on what they base that capital program on. We're doing growth rates right here. Reusing the growth rates from that older half-study from 23, 24. So that's the best that we have to go on. We do our own, in fact, we did some of ours. We were not, we were not nearly as aggressive as what the study did. We just didn't, we're not comfortable with that. We probably, the study was showing 15%, 16% growth. We're, we're at about five to seven in different customer classes. And that's a pretty solid growth. I think y'all hit it, I, I feel comfortable on what the bigger numbers were. We'll have, we'll have a closer tie in another few months between the capital program and what the growth is. So that, that will make a difference. Part of it, as I mentioned, and again, that's the council decision. It's part of like, I get the huge money just up here and everything. The impact fee stuff, going from that 60 to 100%. You saw that was a $1.1 million in 27. That's directly money, and I'm not advocating either way. We just have better numbers to show you what that, the real difference is. So it, it does make a, it does make a big swing that right now, under this picture, we're trying, we're recovering that $1.1 million from the rate payers. The biggest part, we're not trying to workshop, we're not trying to get action tonight, just trying to give you an idea then of what you're looking at, what kind of numbers you're looking at and really more focused on. Because a lot of times, councils will come through this and say, okay, let's go ahead and set the rates for the next three years. It's that way, we don't have to keep coming back and trying to convince people to do more. I would absolutely say, don't do that tonight. You have too many changes coming up. But you do need to do something quickly for 2026. We do need to make that decision because that has a huge impact. And you see what you're looking at right now. If you wanted to be in a standalone position, say by the next five years, you see what it takes there. Anything you don't do in 26, you're just going to push off the out years. And actually, it's even going to be a little tougher because you don't have 26 to build off of. So that, that is it. And we can run infinite number of scenarios on this. And we did, I have a lot of scenarios saved over the scenario manager here, just playing with it. But I went from a baseline to, to the other end. Here's what it's going to take when you stop, get off the train, anywhere in between on that too. So any questions?
After making those changes, can you go back down and see what the sample bill would look like?
Yes, yes ma'am, thank you, sorry about that. Here's what you've got for each of those. And actually, well, I can't do it because it's a graph and not something I can grab. I think if you look at that line roughly 52, the increase where it starts in 2026 with what we did, that 25% on water and then the $4 on wastewater, that's going to be a 30, roughly a $39 increase per month to customers on the average usage, average residential customer. It's going to be a $25, roughly $25 increase per month by 27, 31, 32, by 28, and so on. That is about $150 total per month. If you remember last time, we were showing you, we were at $150, $160 the first year is what we were presenting. So it's a much better, much different picture. It's still, it's still a lot, I fully realize that. I live up around Denton, Northlake. My water bill is $300 a month. I don't use tons, I have a big spot I'm doing, it's just what the, and I'm on septic, so that's purely water. So I understand that makes it no less painful and it is big decisions. Sir, anything else I can show you? You see, even doing this, if you look at the line 33, remember again, our debt service coverage is 1.1 minimum that we have to maintain. We only get to 1.23 by doing these things in 2028. So we did not make big changes. And the thing is, it creates a lot of cash. Builds up the cash, we can use that cash for debt service and stuff, paying down capital projects. It doesn't have a huge impact on that. It helps us. But all that stuff is a difference between what we would call above the line and below the line. Below the line things like cash for capital projects doesn't count to your debt service. Those are things like your revenues versus your operating expenses and what your actual debt service payment is. That's what drives your debt service coverage number.
And this bill is keeping the impact fee at 60%?
Yes, sir, this is, that's it, keeping it at 60%.
So next year, can you show us what will happen next year without the 100%?
What, what we will do is end up building bigger cash reserves because we only get that, we only get the impact in 27 because we're already accounting for 100% in starting 28. And it's a little tougher now, I like to show it where we change it, you can see it change over here, but. So this is what I was saying, here's where we get the big impact there. So here, now we're only at $675,000 for our under-recovery on the, in 27 then by making that change, that's when we made the change. We're ending fund balance, so we're over recovering then in 27 by $2.3 million. We get up to $12.6 million here. It's really affecting our fund balance. It affects our 2027 over-recovery, over/under recovery, because that's the year. The rest of them are already set at 100%. So we were already collecting that revenue in the out years. But 27s where it changed and it hits the fund balance. So we add another, almost $1.1 million to fund balance there.
And will that show any of the debt that ends using up?
It will, because we'll pay cash for projects. So instead of issuing debt, we'll, we'll use that money. We won't leave seven, you have $7.6 million sitting in the bank there. We'll, we'll use it to fund some projects.
Questions?
It's a lot of information, I know, I realize that too. I apologize, it's just hard to know how to present.
Can this be sent to us? Can this be emailed to us?
It's your plan, yes ma'am. What, what would help you?
Just, should, I mean, it's a lot to review this evening, just kind of going back and forth that you did on the form, it doesn't have production.
Would, would it be, say screenshot of this as a, assuming you probably don't want the model, to try to figure out the model and how to use it, but you're welcome to, it's y'all's model. What, what would help you more? The screenshots of, say, of this versus the zero or what, what would help you on that?
For me, the model.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy, yes ma'am, again, the Charles model on that. No, the only thing we won't have done, we won't have fixed, mainly we'll try to fix ourselves so we can change. So nobody can change accident or anything like this, so it won't be done there. Save the base one and go place another one, you know, on that. So I'll send it to Jorge and put it on and distribute that, absolutely.
Is that it?
It's never quite bizarre in all, okay? It never, ever happens, so.
Just getting ready for the pitchforks.
Exactly, it's hard and feathered, that's, that's why, let me stand up here and take the meetings on that one, absolutely. All right, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Moving to 6.2, we're receiving a discussion presentation on proposed changes to Article 8.02 of the City of Gerald Ordinance Regulating to Noise Regulation.
It's me, sorry, I was getting this a little bit. So we workshopped noise regulations with PMZ in October, I believe. You do have a copy of a streamlined version. There is already a noise ordinance adopted in Section 8.2 of the municipal ordinances. We presented a couple of options from other neighboring municipalities to PMZ and they opted to adopt. Um, we presented a couple of options from other neighboring municipalities to P and Z and they opted to adopt um almost a little bit in full, uh, with some minor changes. Um, but you have a fully with the Article eight point oh-two is the recommended changes that has already been added to the D and B department. Um, so P and Z did it one, did recommend um decreasing, I'm sorry, no, this is, this is the existing one, right? Eight point one-two, adopted in twenty fifteen, yeah, let's see, okay, so this is the existing one that you have approved that's at eight point oh-two at the top. The ordinance that says craft on the front of it would be the, okay, correct. Um, their recommendation was to decrease some of the DBA levels um for industrial, commercial, residential. We did present that to the uh city attorney and she said that they were very restrictive based off of what was in the area. Seventy BBAs is um, or seventy decibels is like a hair dryer, um, which is appropriate for industrial type use. Uh, sixty BBs or fifty is about a general conversation like what we're doing here right now. Um, so she did recommend that we put those back to residential limits at fifty-five, commercial limit sixty-five, and industrial at seventy. Um, so we're just workshopping this tonight with the intention of adoption uh in December or January due to some of the developments that we've, that we know are coming. Uh, just to get this a little bit, a little bit tougher, a little bit stronger, uh, so that we can have something in place prior to any, anything coming in. So if you have questions on it, we are here. Um, and again, it went to P and Z, made recommended changes, went to um the legal department based off of those recommended changes.
It's quite comprehensive compared to what the city had and for the things that we're looking to have come in, we needed.
We did put enforcement of this under the uh city police department because a lot of times your risk complaints will be after hours when we don't have city staff. Like myself or a road enforcement officer here present to go do uh measurement of the sound meter. So we did house this uh enforcement of this ordinance that that feels to be.
Did you update the the noise meter, what we talked about, the noise, the actual noise meter?
Oh, I mean, like being operated on, just operated by the city. Yeah, that's it, okay, and calibration and all that.
All of that's part of their budget allowed?
Okay. Yeah. Sound level measurement shall be made by the sound level meter owned and operated by the city's police department. Such meters shall be calibrated by the manufacturer and its accuracy validated annually as prescribed by the manufacturer.
This is draft, you can read it, read through it, send you any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Don't have to read through it at this meeting?
No, yes. Uh, I won't have it on the December meeting for adoption, we're not under a time crunch for this. Once it's adopted by the government, it's effective regardless of when.
Okay.
Um, so we'll probably, eh, do you wanna workshop it again in December? Do you wanna look it over, hold it over until January, um, just need some guidance?
Okay.
So workshop again till we get our markings on, we discuss them.
Okay, so workshop in December, okay. And then if you guys have questions, comments, want changes, then we'll get those added back to the, okay. You got it on there?
Yeah, it'll be there.
Huh? It's on the.
Okay, moving on to six point three, we're receiving a discussion presentation on adoption of City of Gerald standard details, utilities, construction details, roadway standards, et cetera.
This one's gonna be Jorge, I'm just pulling up this presentation.
Basically, uh, just to start the conversation, the ours, our city standards last time we were reviewed was in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and there was a lot of deficiencies on it, like some standard details we did not have and we tend to refer developers to other cities. And most of the, the most recommended was the city of Ramrod. By that, it creates a bunch of inconsistencies in in the prior review. They they can bring you Austin, Austin plans, they can use, if we have one, or they can overlap what we have with all the cities. Uh, ended up being a manual of five hundred and four pages, so we're not gonna read five hundred and four pages tonight. Uh, now that would lose my job, I think. Uh, while we update the manual, we we wanna be bringing back all the current twenty twenty-four UBC standards, uh, ensure that it consists of enforcement, uh, qualified qualification for developers and support safer, more resilient infrastructure. And also reinforce the growth, growth pays for growth. A big feature, the standards are composed of three manuals, there is a street design manual, the utility criteria manual, and the street design manual. Now, by making the changes, I mean, we are pretty much, uh, by mod, modification, not only keep the what is already in words, but it also lies everything with our core organization and code, making it clear for developers and staff. Uh, it also make reference to some standard code like text or ash dot T C Q, I I P E, I P C and up, and ended at the newly at last fourteen for drainage. Uh, it also includes standardized G I S ASB requirements, so they have to give me an ASB that we can incorporate our G I S uh model. And it also links all the, all the uh manuals, one view like street, to drain, drain, sure utilities. And that will avoid, that will make sure that it has a flow as they, as they designed. Uh. Then, while we improve the drainage criteria, uh, remember a long time ago, we adopted N F I P and that requires go to the Allah fourteen, that was up to the flood plain map that we have. Uh, so now we're making reference that any developer has to go reference that that Allah fourteen in compliance with with that, uh, with with that uh idea. Uh, so clear, clear the hundred percent, the hundred year storm and not, and has not best impact requirement. Uh. Make reference, like I already said, make reference to Allah fourteen, uh, clear uh direction, the twenty-five year and the hundred year design. Uh, just to make reference, the twenty-five years and the hundred year uh rain doesn't mean that every hundred year, every twenty-five years we have is a percentage. Like, the twenty-five year rain is a four percent chance that you're gonna have a major event of that rain. The one, 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 uh, the hundred year plan is a one percent chance that you're gonna have that major event of rain. And each one is bigger than the one, the the one. Like, twenty-five, the uh twenty-five year flood plain event, the twenty-five year rain event might cover exponential area. The one hundred, it would be a bigger area, but it's one, you you're gonna have one percent chance to be, every year to have it uh reach that that volume. Uh. We adopted the N F I P, also make that, make reference and and require stronger requirements for for uh design. And now every, and also require that every drainage report has to be stamped by a P, by a P engineer paid by the developer, not by the city. Uh. On the street criteria manual, we we have in our ordinance that that traffic impact analysis, we we already stated that no matter, regardless of the size of any development, they have to go to a traffic impact analysis, their purpose is, it will give us a guideline on what improvement have to be in place for that, traffic wise, for that development to to be able to operate that, uh, like, it could be, it could require a diesel lane, it could require an extra lane, a traffic signal, a four-way stop. That will be revealed in the traffic impact analysis. And again, all the cost of improvement goes on the developer and not on the city. Uh, also it was a, a leverage to negotiate with the imp, with the traffic, uh, with the developer. Some traffic, traffic impact analysis are not cheap. So you're gonna have a development that is not big enough to afford that cost, then the the leverage we have is like, don't go through the damage impacting, but then sit down with us and we tell you what we need to be improving that roadway. Uh, before, there were triggers. And it do hold that some developers use, no offense, some developers use, if if the trigger was fifteen hundred homes, they build a thousand. Oh, didn't trigger, didn't trigger anything, so no traffic impacting, and they keep building in the development and you end up, you end up with this massive amount of houses and no roadway improvement in place. So I remove the triggers now, regardless of the size, you have to go through the graphic impact analysis. Uh. Also, on the street design, we made some new cross-sections. It will detail sidewalks, the cross-section are classified by street classification. And in in that detail, we tell you the sidewalk that you have to implement on it. Uh, their ideas are gonna be six-foot sidewalks, their other ideas are gonna be ten-foot sidewalks. And the whole idea is that people can walk and bike and provide connectivity to their residents, to the schools and all that is. Uh, of course, their major road is that we not gonna put uh any sidewalks, we, you don't want, we don't want to keep walking or biking next to a seventy-five mile road. Uh, so it it clears that and instead, it adds, they also include a table and state all the requirements by street classification. Uh. The utility ca, criteria manual uh clarifies that eh the utilities uh ought to be approved by the city. Uh. It obtains our criteria manual by to the the most correct international plumbing code. Uh, it clears expectation for water, wastewater, construction plants, lift station, uh, service connection, disman and abandonment procedures. Reinforce low-pressure grinder system, low-pressure grinder system is uh pretty much a eh, uh, a very underground tank with a grinder, grinder pump in it. Will grind the solids and then will pump it to a pressurized way for a line. Uh, and that's when you are in a point that gravity does not work anymore, then you have to pump the, pump it. It's low pressure, cause a bunch of problems, so it is, they they have language to discourage the use of that type of pumps in the system. Uh, again, some of the, it would reduce the operations and maintenance liability, ensure consistency and safety uh expansion, protect the city from inherent height maintenance systems, uh, make the city engineer as the authority and clear ASB and G I S and meals work to be developed. Uh, I mentioned this, just to recap, how these manuals work together, but now drainage would be linked to streets, they were linked to utilities, all manuals are linked to a G I S component and D I S are linked to capital improvements. So integrates design under the same twenty twenty-five framework. We're not gonna have now different codes, different uh standards uh on it. And the benefits are, again, the benefit, it would reduce conflict between system, produce more complete coordinate development plans and so it will support long-term infrastructure. And the means to the City of Gerald. Uh, clear and enforceable standards, reduce the risk to residents and taxpayers, higher quality private development, more accurate infrastructure planning and stronger uh protection during rapid growth. My intention is to present this manual for adoption in December. Uh, I just wanna give you an overview because, again, it's five hundred and four pages, I don't think you wanna go through five hundred and four pages. No.
What is it, you said the city's current U D C standards are?
No, the design standard, not the U D C, the design standard will last review on twenty twenty-two.
Gotcha.
And I don't think it included like drainage.
Hmm.
It did include certain components that are included now.
Yeah, it's it's, that's why it goes back, that whatever we did not have in a manual, we tend, the practice was direct developers to other cities. Uh, in my case, I was more familiar with Ramrod, uh, Ramrod and Georgetown, so if I don't have, if I didn't have it, I I I will ask the developer, just me and whatever Ramrod, whatever uh Georgetown had.
Right.
But I seen Austin, I seen Temple, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, even back to twenty-five one, we were directed to Ramrod for a lot of.
Any questions? All right. All right, so we're gonna end this workshop, reconvene. Gerald City Council can come back in session at nine fifty-seven P M. And if there's no further business, we are adjourned for nine fifty-seven P M.